Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, March 7th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Mr. Miller, you take the roll call, please.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Show her absent and excused, please.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Show him absent and excused as well.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember Karafodas.
Here.
We do have a quorum with five members present.
Thank you, sir. Move on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, March 7th, 2022 at 7:00 PM as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Now we'll go on to recognition. I'm going to call up Mr. Marciniac from the Audit Assessing Requirements Certificate of Achievement. Mr. Marciniac.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is a formal presentation to the city for the achievement received by our assessing department. If you recall, a handful of months ago, we renewed the contract with WCA Assessing to do our assessing services. And Ms. Gracer is here from WCA, who is intricately involved with the city and all our assessing matters, and she will discuss this achievement in greater detail. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. What this achievement is, every four years, the state of Michigan conducts an audit for all assessing practices to make sure that the local municipalities are in compliance with their requirements. And for, it was supposed to occur in 2020, but due to COVID, it was pushed back, and they did analyze the 2021 assessment rule. So they polled our data, and what they analyzed was our market analysis to make sure we were in compliance, and just general assessing practices. So I'm pleased to say we not only passed, but we got a perfect score. So as a result, we received the certificate of achievement from the State Tax Commission in December, so this evening I just wanted to present that to you on the city's behalf, and it's pretty amazing.
Mr. Marciniac, come back up. I'll take a picture with you right up here. On behalf of Mayor and Council, I want to thank Wayne County Assessing for the hard work you guys do, and assessing our property in Garden City. This is excellent, we've got 100%. So we'll come out here and take a picture in front of the podium. It's always good to get good awards. It's fantastic.
Okay. Do we have anybody here from the state or county officials? I don't see anybody. Nothing new there. No presentations, no community events, no petitions or communications, no public hearings tonight. Moving on to item 11, the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 11A, 1 through 4.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 5-0. Moving on to our action item, construction inspection services. I'm going to call up Mr. Brad Omen, DPS Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is to approve a three-year contract for construction inspection services. We did receive three bids for these services. These services consist of inspection of road projects, the sidewalk program, lead water service replacement, and any other water sewer repairs done by emergency contractors. The Bucelli Group has been our inspection contractor for the past three years. He's done a nice job for us, and he was the lowest bidder. Hennessy Engineers, our engineering firm, was the second lowest bidder out of the three. I would like to recommend awarding a contract to both the Bucelli Group and Hennessy Engineering, the Bucelli Group being our primary inspector, and Hennessy Engineering being our inspector for as-needed emergency situations. Again, we will always use Bucelli Group, but if the time comes where there's too many projects that the Bucelli Group can't handle, we could always fall back on Hennessy.
Okay, and this is a three-year contract, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody from the table have any questions for Mr. Omen? Okay, motions in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
I move to approve a three-year contract with the Bucelli Group of Labonia, Michigan as our primary construction inspection services contractor in the amount of $60 per hour. Hennessy Engineers of South Gate, Michigan, as our secondary contractor for as-needed emergency construction inspection services in the amount of $75 an hour.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. We have Mr. Bucelli here, Mr. Cruz from Hennessy. They do do good work. I hunted them down every year, questions on the road work, and they always take care of business, so I think it's good that we're renewing.
The one thing I do, I will say is, during the road construction, I've had several citizens come to me and say, they thought Bucelli was actually doing the work because they saw them out there, and they would go ask them questions, and they would explain to them, this is why I'm supporting this, because they were interacting with the citizens well, and if you go by the sites, I see them there often.
Yep, they're on top of it, yep. Any other comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 5-0. Item 2, 2022 Sidewalk Program Design Stage Services. Mr. Omen, you're up again.
Yes, Mayor. This is to approve the contract for the 2022 Sidewalk Program Design Stage Services with the Bucelli Group. This is the 11th consecutive year that the city has had a sidewalk replacement program. The Bucelli Group did manage last year's program. This service involves infield evaluation, project administration, and inspection. The area for this year's program will be the remainder of the far southeast part of the city, Middlebelt to Inkster Road, Ford Road to Cherry Hill, excluding the 2021 sidewalk program area of Harrison to Inkster, forward to Marquette. This program will be addressing trip hazards greater than one inch.
Okay, I thought it was Marquette to Cherry Hill, Harrison to Middlebelt, this year.
Excluding that one section from Marquette east.
Okay. And for the residents, this is when your sidewalks heaved up one inch or more, they'll put a circle or an X or whatever, and then the homeowner can replace it themselves, or they can go with the city contractor, get the better price. And Mr. Dockerty, how many years can they take to pay for it?
Up to five years.
Up to five years?
It could be one flag, one square is about $175. Correct?
Well, this year, based on the next agenda item, if it's approved, it'll be about $186.
$186 a square?
For four inches.
And you can take five years to pay for it, and cement's only warranted one year, and if you get new cement, do not put salt on it the first winter. I like to keep saying that, to get that out there, so people don't ruin their new cement. Are motions in order?
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to approve the contract for the 2022 Sidewalk Program Design Stage Services with Bucelli Group of Labonia, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $69,500. Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Comments from the table?
I have a question.
Councilmember Karafodas.
My question is about the one inch. We had a lot of residents recently come to the meetings and ask about this. Is it sidewalks only that are one inch? It's not sidewalks that are ruined in some other way? Like, it's just things that are unlevel and that's it?
Well, if a sidewalk flag is so cracked up that it can create a trip hazard, those will be addressed also.
Even ones that are crumbling, even if they're proofed?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's the only question I had, thank you.
Any other comments from the table? From the general public? Mr. Murray.
How's everybody today?
Good.
Good.
I was reviewing some old minutes, and it's a 9/10/18 meeting, where I think it was James Street, where we had a debacle of really not getting our guidance on what's being done. What my concern right now is, is I've seen, like, in my, I live in Area 11, and there's one home where it's totally trashed, but it's not a trip hazard. Are they, should they have repaired that? Or was it an oversight? And exactly what are we looking for in this completion? Because it is important to fix that, because these trip hazards can hurt a lot of people. But there's a lot of road sidewalks that should have had something done, and it didn't. And during the inspection process of transferring properties, we're allowing them to put this slurry in there, to put a grate on it, and after one winter, it crumbles, so a new homeowner is caught, you know, has to pick up the cost whenever we go through there. So we need to coordinate our inspections within the transferring of properties with this activity, so these new homeowners don't get hit with a hard bang. So I'd like you to...
My, I would suggest that you give any address that you're talking about, where this bad sidewalk is at, so we can check it out, okay?
I have a comment at public.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, I have one more question.
Yep.
Does this include the businesses that, or is it just residential? Like, all the businesses that are down Inkster between Marquette and Cherry Hill?
Oh, it will, we will address commercial properties also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more comments from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 5-0. Item 3, 2223 Sidewalk Program Bid Award. Mr. Omen, you got anything to say on this one?
Yes, Mayor. This is to approve a two-year contract for the cement contractor for the 2022 and 2023 sidewalk replacement program. We did receive nine bids for these projects. JB Contractors of Detroit was the lowest bidder. I've already spoke of this year's area that we will be doing. In 2023, we'll be having the sidewalk replacement program from Ford Road to Cherry Hill, Merriman to Middlebelt. Unlike sidewalk programs in the past, I have decided to take on larger areas, one square mile at a time, to get on a six-year rotation. This way, we will be visiting every sidewalk every six years for inspection. I feel we have found a contractor that is able to accomplish this work on schedule.
Okay, my question is, this JB contractor, we've never used him before, correct?
No.
What do you know about him? Did you call around? I mean...
I know they're strictly a sidewalk contractor, hungry for work. I know Alan Cruz from Hennessy Engineers has talked to them, talked to other communities that have worked with them, and did a fine job.
Okay. Okay, motions in order.
One question?
Yeah, go ahead.
If, let's say, it were in front of my house, and I have two slabs that need replacing, but I decided I wanted to have six slabs replaced, will they do that as well?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, motions in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve a two-year contract for the 2022 and 2023 sidewalk replacement programs to JB Contractors of Detroit, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $396,850.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Item 4, post-construction stormwater management ordinance. This is just a call for a public hearing for April 11th at 7:00 PM. We're just, we'll have discussion that night on this, correct?
Okay.
Yeah. So this is just a call for a public hearing. The discussion will be on April 11th. Motions in order. Councilmember Lynch.
I move to introduce the attached post-construction stormwater management ordinance and call for a public hearing for Monday, April 11th, 2022, at 7 o'clock PM.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Earl. Comments from the table? General public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this passes, 5-0. Last item, item 5, 2021-22 Budget Amendment Number 2, Mr. Marciniac. You want to come up and explain this budget amendment, please?
Sure. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Before you, is the second budget amendment to the 2021-22 budget, which was passed May of '22. In this budget, it's basically amending the capital purchases of the Radcliffe Center. That was not in the original budget, and also it will be amending for the first payment of the ARPA money received from the state through the, or from the federal government through the state of Michigan. We received our first payment of just under $1.4 million.
Money coming into us.
Money coming up. So one is amending the expenditures for the purchase of Radcliffe Center and the equipment, and the other one is amending the revenues for the first payment for ARPA.
Very good. Motions in order?
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to approve Budget Amendment Number 2 to the 2021-22 budget. Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any comments from the table? From the general public? Mr. Murray.
The question I have is, where is this money actually coming from? Is it like a bulk of money that you have for emergencies, or is this like a savings account that we have? Because I think when we had the CPA, they said something about us having $9 million of uncommitted money. So are we taking the money out of there, or is there another pot of money you're getting it from?
We're getting another pot of money from the federal government.
Could you elaborate on what's being...
Yeah, I have to talk to Mr. Marciniac, or I have him come back up.
I think he's asking about for the purchase of...
Oh, for the purchase of...
Yeah.
You want to...
That's what I'm, I'm referring to Radcliffe, is what I'm more or less asking.
Yes, the Radcliffe Center is actually being purchased through unused fund balance from prior years.
Not of the general fund?
Not of the general fund, yes.
But we have all this COVID money coming in?
Yep, that's just, I mean, I just included the revenue, we, just like we used some of that money to purchase the fire truck earlier in the year, from our, from our fund balance from prior years. This is just an additional...
That answers it, thank you. Okay, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. This time, we'll move on to public comments for items that were not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, come up, state your name. There's a three-minute time limit. This is your opportunity to make a comment or statement. It's not the time to go back and forth with council members. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Yvonne, and I'm a volunteer at Maplewood's Thrift Shop. On 3-1, and I'm speaking on behalf of most of the volunteers, you know, there's another one that will be speaking tonight.
Okay.
On 3-1, the volunteers were notified at our monthly meeting that the city had purchased the Radcliffe Building, and that the community center would be moving into that building sometime in 2023. Once the move takes place, and I'm quoting, "It will be the end of the thrift shop." Donations to the thrift shop stopped as of yesterday, which was 2/28/22. I would like to just give you a little background of the thrift shop. The thrift shop has been in existence for 39 years, supporting senior activities. The shop is its own entity composed of a volunteer group, which has a treasurer, secretary, and other volunteers. The committee makes the rules and procedures for running the shop. Money made from sales is solely the shop's money, and the committee decides what senior activities or charities will receive money, and the amount is approved by a majority, which is three committee members. On behalf of the volunteers, we would like to thank the young lady who posted the devastating news we received on 3-1 on Facebook. We also want to thank the community for its support of the thrift shop on that day. Later on in the day, there was a retraction of the statement that a definite decision had been made regarding the shop not being able to transition to the Radcliffe Center, excuse me. Donations, which had been stopped, now they said they could, we could resume getting donations. And just for the information of the council and the mayor, in case you don't know, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of what happens to the monies that are made in the thrift shop. And that all of the money goes back to the community. The volunteers get one luncheon each year for their services, and they are there, believe you me, for the entire duration that the thrift shop is open. But the community, what we support, are the senior activities at the center. All of the entertainment, we pay for that, for all senior activities. We also donated $4,000 when they were doing the update of the city park. The volunteer committee gave...
Mr. Mayor, this is the three-minute mark.
Okay.
Am I, it's like, I'm sorry.
Few times, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, someone else will continue.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
No problem. Anybody else? Sir, come on up.
Hello, everybody. Mayor.
Your name?
Doc. My name's Hans Camp. I'm the resident who lives on Dover River, and I was here maybe three council meetings ago.
Yep.
And spring is coming, so I'm kind of getting worried, and I was wondering if anybody came up with any ideas or suggestions on what I should do.
Okay, we'll have to get with Mr. Omen. The flooding issue, yeah?
And the grudge.
We'll have to stay after, we'll talk to Mr. Omen, see where he at, okay? He's back there. Anybody else?
In our charter, we have a, it's called Compensation and Expenses for Council, and C says that you have to get approval for any expenditure over $100. And what my problem is, is at the school craft meeting, you asked me to put stuff in writing. I've done that, sir. And I seem to be getting what I refer to as procedural gymnastics. I submitted a FOIA, and it says, "Any checks drawn upon the library or library fund balances during time period of 12/1/21 to 2/17/22, and all supporting documents showing who authorized or otherwise directed those checks to be written and dispensed." I also asked if there's legal documents stating the position of the library board, any documents from the library board requesting said checks. How was the checks delivered and accepted and transferred? Is the library board cash reserve being invested? And I needed any directives from the city manager. I got a FOIA thing, and it's cost me $110 to find this information. I would believe that through due diligence of your city manager, this should have been something just stamped right out, where there would be a protocol of documents of what was going on. Why am I paying $110 for this, especially since I'm trying to appease you and put this information in writing? I've also been told some of my FOIA requests do not fall under the guidelines of that. So my question, Council, is, when residents give you a FOIA, do you receive the documents and said actions? And do you take any special interest on that? And are we going to do something to be more transparent and accountable within the city guidelines? I realize that you guys have a tough job. And the accessor lady that was here today has done an exquisite job at explaining what goes on. Our residents think where they pay $5,000, you guys have all $5,000 to spend. Somehow, we need to educate our residents, just like Stacy at the last meeting made comments about educating our departments. Mr. Earl brought it up six months earlier in that. So, Mr. Dockerty, what are you doing to educate our people? I'm not happy with your performance, and I don't know how to explain it to you, because I don't really like dealing with gentlemen that answer questions with more questions. Do you understand the difficulty you and I have?
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, city managers report.
Sorry, Mayor, the only thing, GCU. I'm sorry.
I thought there was one more.
Okay. GCU, Wednesday evenings, coming back, second semester. We are sold out at this point for this spring semester. But once the program starts, we have about 30 students. Once we start, we're going to be opening up for the fall, another class for people to learn about their local government. Six classes, all the different departments are discussed, including the structure of the government itself. So it's a great program to be part of. So start looking for a program in the fall semester for GCU. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Earl.
Thank you, Mayor. First, BPI, is that the phone company?
First, BPI, is that the phone company?
No, that's our internet.
Internet?
That's our IT company.
Well, our phones seem to go down an awful lot. And so I would like to know why we have this company that can't seem to keep our phones working, and who can come in and do the job that they can't? That's number one. Number two, on a better note, tonight as we speak, Garden City High School varsity basketball team is playing in districts, so good luck to them. Hopefully, they win. And number three, Thursday night, I'm going to be on a show with two dapper gentlemen, Garden City Community Chat, discussing city things and some business things. So hopefully, everybody will join. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem Squires.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Mr. Omen, I think it's a great plan that you have as far as the sidewalk program goes, dividing the city into six areas. That way, there's no confusion as to which area is going to be done and to rotate it, you know, every six years. I think it's a great plan, and thank you for that. And to the thrift shop, I know the good that you all do. You have supported so many of the charities here in Garden City. And we, just to let you know, we do appreciate you. And just always check out if somebody, if you hear a rumor or somebody says something, always double-check with City Hall to make sure that the information you're getting is correct, so you don't get all upset. Because I know it is upsetting to hear bad things. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynch.
I just have one item. Don't forget to spring ahead this weekend. It's already that time.
Lose an hour of sleep.
Yeah, lose an hour of sleep, but you gain sunshine.
Okay. Councilmember Carefodas.
Yes, I'd like to bring up our vacant buildings that we have in town. I think we need to be doing more to get these buildings rented and full of businesses. In two thousand and nineteen, our council adopted a new vacant building ordinance. Building owners have to register yearly with the city, and they have to pay a fee of two hundred dollars for inspections. Our vacant building list right now has about thirty-five commercial buildings on it. But that list doesn't include things like the old Frankie's Bar that burned down, the empty jewelry store next to it, Larry's Auto Parts, the old Hair Hut, things like that. Our city manager did mention that we're going to be hiring an intern, and he's going to be going around making this list more complete so we can work on it. I was hoping that council could consider making the ordinance a bit tougher with more expensive fees so that the building owners would prefer to rent these buildings than leave them empty. Other cities have much tougher ordinances. Examples, Livonia, they have a seven-hundred-dollar yearly fee and a forty-dollar-a-month fee. So every month that it's vacant, they have to report again and send in a payment. So I'd like to suggest that we do some more research and maybe have some more discussions about improving this ordinance and maybe updating it a little bit more to make it a little bit stricter so we can get some of these empty buildings filled. And then also, I would like to say that Lucky Dog is having our annual Kids Read to Dogs event. It's the last Saturday in March. The library helps us out and donates books for it. Any kid in Garden City can come to Lucky Dog, too, between one and four. I think we'll have a surprise visitor. Maybe Rudy and Blue are going to stop by, you can read to the dogs. And it's a very successful event in Garden City. This is our seventh year doing it. We had to stop for COVID last year, but we usually get anywhere between fifty and a hundred kids to come, and it's a great event. So I just want to mention that for everybody. And that's it.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple announcements. Actually, today, we just received notice that the household hazardous waste collection will occur again, finally, after COVID and a long absence. It's going to take place April second from eight until one at Westland Shopping Center in, in Westland. And we have also taken the flyer. It's going, it should be uploaded today on the website. But again, just to collect all of your hazardous waste and get up to Westland on April second from eight until one o'clock, okay? And then also, I just wanted to bring you up to date on our scanning project for our birth and death records. We're at eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five records that are scanned, and we still have twenty-one years of birth to go. So we will crest over the hundred thousand mark soon. But again, if you do come in and your record is not here, we are working as diligently as possible to get them scanned, get them uploaded to the system so that we can provide that record to you. But again, thank you for allowing me to get this important task done and to save those documents digitally. Thank you.
Thank you. To the thrift shop, thank you for all you do. I want to remind you guys and the residents, this board up here runs the city and makes all the decisions of what goes on in the city. We were elected by the residents to run the city. None of us or the city managers said we were kicking you out. So I don't know how that got going. And I'm going to say this again. What council talked about, and this is our somewhat of a timeline, we don't know it for, for sure, but we plan on closing, don't hold the dates to me, somewhere around July first on the Radcliffe property. Then we're going to do renovations on the Radcliffe property and try to move into it late this year, winter, December, maybe even into January. And then this council is going to decide what we're going to do with Maplewood. Okay? And I'm pretty sure everything's going to, if my colleagues agree, and we'll talk about it, everything's probably going to go from Maplewood to the Radcliffe Center. I don't hear any talk of anybody getting kicked out. Now, I'm not saying that an employee at the Maplewood Center misspoke. Maybe they were thinking, you know, everything's going to be going to the Radcliffe, I don't know. But when you hear a rumor like that, call City Hall up here where the decisions are made and ask us, okay? Nobody up here said the thrift shop was closing. We haven't made that decision yet. We, we said down the road, after we get moved into Radcliffe, we're going to discuss what's going to happen with Maplewood. We don't know if we're going to sell it, if it's going to be torn down. So that, those decisions haven't been made yet. So there's nothing going on with the thrift shop. And we thank you for the work you guys do, all those years, and so don't sweat it, okay? FOIA requests are handled by the city clerk. If you got any questions about FOIA, that's not council or the city manager. Mr. Miller handles all FOIA requests. So if you got any questions about FOIA requests or what's going on with them, you need to see Mr. Miller. I want to say congratulations to my grandson, who took fourth place in the state finals for wrestling, Anthony Walker. I'm very proud of him. That's all I have, no further business. This meeting is adjourned.